Good evening, Oyster River families who are coming to this streaming of the school board meeting. We are still waiting for a school board member to arrive. This is an unusual meeting in the sense that it starts at 5:30 and so we're going to give our board member about another five minutes before we begin. Thank you.
She can start.
Oh, I forgot it was me. Good evening, Oyster River community. Tonight is the opening of what normally would be our election of officers. And in that process, until a new slate of officers is elected, the superintendent would run the meeting. I'm asking the board members present to consider a change in that process, given the fact that this is an emergency meeting of the board. I'm wondering if the board is open to allowing the current slate of officers to work until our next regularly scheduled meeting, which is normally when we would do the election of officers. So I guess I'm opening that up discussion to see if the board is interested in doing that. My concern is that two of our board members aren't here tonight and we're working with a quorum of five. We certainly can do the board's business with a quorum of five. So the question I have is, is this something you would be interested in doing or do you want to go forward with the election of officers?
I'm fine with postponing. I think it's the right thing to do, given ideally we should have a full board make that decision.
Feedback? Notting of heads? Denise?
Yeah.
I'm fine.
Brian? Okay, so given that there's consensus on the board, I won't call for a vote because that just simply means that we've affirmed that Tom is chair until we have a regularly scheduled meeting and Denise is vice chair. And we just maintain our current subcommittee assignments until that time as well. All right? In that case, I'll turn the meeting over to Tom Newkirk.
Could I have a motion to approve the agenda? Denise?
I motion to approve the agenda.
Moved by Denise, seconded by Brian. All in favor, raise your hands. Five in favor. The agenda's approved. Is there a public comment? No? Okay. So move right down to the superintendent's report.
Well, to say these are extraordinary times would be an underestimation of what's been happening in the district over the course of this weekend. We had a lot of people working Saturday and Sunday in order to be prepared to open school this morning. Our goal in opening school this morning was to bring our teachers and paraeducators, our bus drivers and our cooks and our tutors to a place where they understood what remote learning was. I still have one meeting left to do tomorrow with the cooks and the custodians, but having met, I met with all the unions starting last Thursday. I met with all the faculties via computer today. So we were literally practicing social distancing using technology and we were using remote learning. Wendy has sent you the copy of my opening remarks and I'll just pass them this way. I just want to say that our teachers and our support staff are truly amazing people. They really stepped up to a whole level of learning in doing this morning in preparation for what I would call a soft rollout on Thursday and Friday of remote learning with the idea that by Monday we'll be in full engagement. So remote learning is really not the same as coming to school every day. Our teachers are going to be creating lessons that capture hopefully our students' imaginations and get through the major concepts that they would be presenting in class. We're not a remote learning institution and so as we go through this process, we will be learning together with our parents and our students to continually refine what we're developing. So we totally anticipate that there'll be hiccups, but I want to say that those hiccups are better than doing nothing for our students. Some states, my home state Maine, they just shut down the schools. Nothing's happening for kids. They just shut them down. I think the approach that we're using in New Hampshire is far more thoughtful and caring, quite frankly. You'll hear tonight from our administrators and our directors our efforts that we worked on over the weekend and started implementing this morning. I just want to commend our administrators working Saturday and Sunday. I want to commend our technology instruction staff. They worked Saturday and Sunday, sometimes visiting teachers' homes to help them understand the technology we'll be using. And I want to really commend our school nurses who came in and helped me formulate the health memos that have gone home and our counselors who have been supporting all of these efforts. These are the people who came in over the weekend at various points, some all weekend, to make today as successful as it was. So I would like to invite my administrators, starting with Suzanne and then to Jay and then to Misty and David, to share where we are as of today and the efforts we've put forward and what we hope to achieve in the next two days.
So the high school? The high school met today through remotely met. Many of the faculty were in the building. People were spread out throughout the building and we really talked about two types of remote learning, synchronous and asynchronous learning. Synchronous being the type of learning that would happen with students and teachers at the same time, so they could be live streaming together using Microsoft Teams, which is what we all use this morning as a method. And then asynchronous learning is really about flipped learning or learning that can happen at any time. So students have access to materials, pre-recorded videos, projects, things like that, and they can access it at any point and work at any point on those different assignments. So those are the two types of learning and instruction that we're talking about within the high school. We have created a two-day rotation for the students and for the teachers so that if they determine that they want to do synchronous learning, they don't have to worry about overlapping with classes. So it is not the normal Bob Capewood and White days. It's actually day one and day two, and this is purely for remote learning. This information is something that was shared with faculty and all this will go out to parents and kids this evening. So the classes are broken into hour-long periods. The day starts a little bit later and every single day starts with office hours or flexible time. We've been talking as a faculty today, we're talking about how great it would be to have an advisory mixed into that, so we're going to look at that also, how we can mix advisory in. But those office hours will be a time where kids and faculty will touch base. There's a list of expectations for both faculty and kids to check your email multiple times during the day and to connect with your teachers. If you need help, the office hours, that first morning period is really where kids can do that. And then the day opens up. So one of the things we tried to do, I tried very hard to do, was to give faculty the flexibility depending on their content area and their curriculum, but also give structure and routine for kids that need it. So the schedule that I'm sending out to parents this evening and to kids really is to give the kids a schedule during their school day that they can go through. So at 9:30, they know they can get on. Those are the office hours. They're going to check their email. They're going to do these types of things. And then starting at 10:30, they'll go into their A period. And if there isn't synchronous learning happening, then they will use that A period for biology if they typically have their biology class A period. And that hopefully will help kids get some structure and may also help parents to support their children as they go through that. So faculty know, we've been talking about how they need to look at their curriculum a little differently, how they need to look at facilitating and instructing a little differently, and they have been absolutely amazing. We had a great day with some very funny moments of Microsoft Team moments where we could see each other throughout the building and engage in conversation. And we even had some kids join us on our Microsoft Team so that the faculty could see how they could pull kids in. And I want to thank Celeste for all of that. She did an amazing job planning the day with me and making sure that faculty have the resources that they need. So for faculty, there is a communication plan. There are some general expectations of faculty about numbers of communication times. If they don't hear from a student within 72 hours, there's to reach out to an administrator. We have a lot of different guidelines in place for them and I'm happy to share those specifics with you if you'd like to see them.
The question that I have is the role of the counselors. Are they going to be reaching out to students or available for students or how will that?
So right now, our counselors are supposed to be doing their one-on-one meetings for scheduling for next year and they're going to keep those meetings. So we've been talking to the counseling staff about how to actually work through that. So the plan is that they're going to keep doing what they've always been doing. They're going to have some flex offerings that they will be able to give to kids. They're going to be meeting with students. They will be able to, parents and kids will still be able to access them by calling them. They can just access their counselors. But I would say that they still are in their master scheduling time period, so it's the best advice I can give to kids and parents is first reach out to the teacher. And then if you have some issues or some struggles, definitely reach out to the counselor and the administrators are also here. But if they need one of us, they can just call the school and that number will be rerouted as necessary.
So that, I visited the counseling office today and their whole whiteboard was full of how they're going to do different services when the child's not right in front of them. They were actively engaged in redesigning their program so it can happen virtually.
Is there any use of techniques like Zoom or something where you have face-to-face?
So that's the Microsoft Teams and so the faculty will be using that. We do have Zoom. The counselors have Zoom. That's something new that people aren't familiar with. They're more familiar with the Microsoft Teams and so that allows face-to-face conversation. It's very similar. And they will, I would say, the majority of kids have gone into Schoology and used it in some degree already. I know that all the freshmen have and I know that there are many teachers. As I went around the building and I asked teachers how they were doing at the end of the day, a lot of them said, "It's just really continuing what I've been doing because I've been using Schoology most of the time."
And so the board knows we've invested in software over the years, that we are standardizing our approach across the K through 12 spectrum so that parents won't be using different pieces of software and students won't be. That inconsistency we've eliminated in this process. So that's why all of our teachers are using Team, all of our teachers are using Schoology. I have to say that in order to do that, Josh Oldstead and his team have been wonderful. I mean, Josh can barely stand up right now because he's been working so hard over the course of these two days. But if you could imagine a whole system automatically overnight trying to switch how they deliver services and the numerous hiccups that can cause, those instructional technology teachers and Josh have been working tirelessly. And you know, at four o'clock, I looked at him and said, "You look really tired." And he said, "I am." And Josh doesn't usually admit that.
Just to be clear, do you go on Schoolology? Hard to say. To get to the face-to-face capability?
No.
Or is that something, is that some other platform?
So it's through Microsoft Office. So using Microsoft and using Schoology together is going to allow for that. So Schoology is really more of the learning management system, similar to Canvas, which a lot of people, or Blackboard, which a lot of people are familiar with. Whereas Microsoft Office is going to allow for meetings to be set so that people can do that. So the kids, there will be a time of growth and learning for everybody through this process. And so we really look at Thursday and Friday as kind of, as Dr. Morris has referred to it, as sort of the soft rollout as people start to get acclimated and learn about the different processes that people are going to use in the classroom.
So what about the courses like art where there's like special, you know, I mean, if you've got sculpting or sculpture or whatever, like how is that? Are they going to be, and I know you and I were talking a little bit before the meeting about students being able to come in and get things that they need. Is that going to be part of it, like if they need supplies in order to, you know, do artwork at home or things like that? How is that going to work?
So we will be, this is where that connection, the teacher-student connection is going to be key. So, and it's also where the creativity of our teachers is quite amazing. So I was talking to Mr. Troy today who teaches our industrial arts classes and he said that he spent the weekend and he found some really quite amazing things that won't require the kids to come in, but they're more interactive and kids can continue their education. And it's the same thing with art. So in talking to the art teachers, they have talked about common things around their kids' homes, things outside, ways of, you know, if you're teaching a sculpture class, what can you access and, you know, by walking out the door in your backyard or someplace to be able to access. And then also if kids are in need of supplies, Dr. Morris has talked about utilizing the transportation services to be able to get kids supplies that they need. And so that information will be sent also to parents about how to access that. And again, if people have questions or concerns about kids not having supplies, they just need to reach out to us and let us know and we would be happy to talk to them about how to fulfill those needs.
Thank you Suzanne.
Thank you.
Javishad, the principal at the middle school. I mean, I've been really, it's amazing in terms of our staff, in terms of how they just get to work. They were extremely busy today, starting to plan as teams with lessons. It's been such a blur on Friday. We actually had all the kids bring home their laptops for the weekend. We also surveyed students. I mean, one of the concerns is principally and teachers, and I'm sure is you, was does everybody have Wi-Fi access? So when we surveyed the kids, there's actually less than 10 kids in the entire school who do not have access to Wi-Fi at home. One of the things, kind of neat story, I had an eighth grade student come up to say, "Mr. Rashad, I don't have, you know, Wi-Fi at my house." And I said, "Don't worry, we'll figure something out to help you out." And one of her friends came over and said, "Oh, you can just come over to my house and use my Wi-Fi." So there'll be collaboration amongst the students to help each other out. This week, the teachers know, you know, Thursday's the soft start. Monday will be the latest, but again, my staff have been great. Dr. Morrison, Todd Allen were in the building today. People are ready to do the work and support kids across the entire school. So this is going to be a good, really good learning experience for us as a school community. We'll do whatever it takes to help out our kids. We are very fortunate that we are one-to-one at the middle school too. So kids will have devices, but we're having all the same types of conversations, you know, me meeting with my art teachers, you know, Al Lofgren. I mean, what can we help? What can we create for kids so they have valuable learning experiences outside, you know, our walls? Yes, Denise?
So are you going to have a similar type of schedule that Suzanne just described? Is that how it's going to work for middle?
Yeah, it's a good thing I get to work with someone like Suzanne's coach. She's always has these great ideas. So I kind of, we're going to copy some of her ideas. We shared with staff. You know, I have asked staff, like, "Let's really be thoughtful in how we do this." I mean, I don't want kids to be at home with nine hours of academic work each day, so let's be very, very thoughtful and let's focus on what we want the kids to learn and be able to do. And it's going to look different for sure.
And then I have another question.
I would add too, we're also being very thoughtful for our staff. This is new to our staff. I mean, we have staff who have kids home now too. So we're going to have some flexibility in terms of how some staff schedule their day. It might look a little bit different than some other staff, if that makes sense. So. Any other questions?
David and Misty?
Hi, Mastway and Mohermit came together today, which was great. David and I were in the building today with Brian Ryan, our Assistant Director of Student Services, and we put our grade level teams in small groups so no one met in a large group. We utilized the Microsoft Teams, just like the high school, in order to remotely open up the day as principals. Then Dr. Morris, district-wide, shared through Microsoft Teams his message. Then we allowed some time for Schoology training and other tools that teachers can use for this remote learning experience. Our goal really was for the grade level teachers to spend the rest of the afternoon creating a common framework. We want both schools to have consistency for our families and how we're tackling this. Schoology is the platform that we are going to be trying to use so that it's similar, consistent for all of our families. Teachers are eager to put together some more physical learning materials through learning kits. We're hoping to work on that tomorrow. We talked a lot about accessibility for all students regardless of their learning differences or any sort of learning challenges they may have. So we worked closely with our special educators, our para-professionals, our related service providers, all of our interventionists to make sure that we are being thoughtful on how we are making this experience accessible for all students. Sorry, I just made some talking points. Mastway and Mohermit again are working to be consistent. We are open for teachers to come in and work within the school building on Tuesday and Wednesday and planning to be closed as of Thursday. David and I are hoping to not get kicked out and continue to work and be available to people as long as possible. We did encourage teachers to have office hours. Teachers were very quick to say Schoology is one-way communication when you're sending information to families, but they want to be able to have two-way communication. We certainly said you can continue to use email, but we also want our teachers to balance that they are not going to be available to the families 24/7. So we suggested some office hours, perhaps an hour in the morning timeframe and an hour in the late afternoon or evening timeframe. And letting families know that they would be getting back in touch within 24 hours, we felt was reasonable to be sure that we're accessible to families.
Thank you. And then I would just add, Denise, you've been asking about the schedules. It's going to look very different at the elementary level. We're going all the way down to five-year-olds.
Right.
And they're going to need a much more support at home, right, to do work. And so what we're thinking about are the enriching learning opportunities that we can provide for families, possible schedules, examples of schedules that could be done in the home if there are adults available to do so and provide them support that way. And then if it's a menu of exciting opportunities for students to interact with, that's also a possibility. And remember, bringing it all the way down to can a five-year-old access the information and do some work independently, all the way up to a 10-year-old. So it's a very big span of development. And then the other piece to that is that a lot of the activities might be happening physically in front of them or out in their yard or, you know, in the playroom, but the information will be on Schoology. So even though we're using the digital platform as the communication tool, and there will be plenty of links and online opportunities for kids, a lot of the Schoology platform for elementary will be letters and videos from teachers and information about the things they can do in front of them in the house.
So similar to what Jay was talking about, that we do have few, there's not many, but a few families that don't have internet access. Other than, you know, going to somebody else's house, is there any other plan to how to reach out to those families? house, is there any other plan to how to reach out to those families that may not have internet?
It's probably a Josh question.
Yep. I will say, before Josh answers the specifics, we've been surveying all of our families. We started last Friday. Do they have devices? Do they have internet access? And then based on that information, we're calling back families who we have questions for, or who didn't get to fill out the survey, and we're compiling that list. Do you have something?
So that is a great question. I've been doing some research. I did find a company that we've been doing business with who put Wi-Fi in our buses. They offer a hotspot for families. It looks like it would probably cost between $200 and $250 for the rest of the year per family. I mean, unless it's a huge family, but I would think probably up to four kids could operate off of that. Unfortunately, their lead time right now is two to four weeks, so I'm trying to see if there's any way to get expedited shipping. So I'm working on trying to get a quote, try to find the timing. The nice thing is, they've already negotiated the agreements with the wireless carriers. So we can just do like a four-month agreement and not lock into like a two-year contract.
That's really good.
So I think that's probably the easiest way to do it. I will say that for families that qualify for free and reduced lunch, Comcast has a program called Internet Essentials. I believe they've waived the fees right now. I could be wrong on that. If they haven't, it's $9.99 a month for internet. I know some other local ISPs up where I live are now offering 60 days free internet for families. I anticipate that more will. I believe T-Mobile and Sprint, if you have them, have removed all data caps, so people can use more data when at home. So hopefully, we'll see more from other companies, but I am looking at this one solution. I have to talk, we have to find out how many kids we have that need it.
Right.
I'm guessing it sounds like between 10 to 15 maybe.
Okay. Yeah, I'm happy to hear that, because that's one of my biggest concerns, not so much for this district, but you know, sort of across the state, that, you know, it's supposed to be, you know, accessible to all the students. So I'm very happy to hear that, for sure.
And right now, our list is the families who have a need, it's more, they need a device, rather than they need internet access. We do have a few families who need internet access, and we can go through all of those ways to provide it. We can also deliver more physical things for them as well, but it's mostly devices. And we have enough, we have plenty of devices in our two schools. We're working on a plan to be able to check those out to families.
Yeah.
We've also talked about, just to highlight for families that have multiple children, to make sure that they're not having to share a device. If there's multiple students that are doing remote learning, we want to make sure that they can each have a device if possible.
That makes sense. Okay, thank you.
I had a question. Is there any sense of doing some collaborative groups? Because with, I'm not familiar with the, you know, the Microsoft version, but certainly with the Zoom version, you could have groups of three or four coming in and out, whether you could have like a math problem and have a group, because these kids are going to be kind of on their own during the day for a long time. And if you could bring, you know, at least online and say, "Okay, here's an algebra problem. Let's see how each of you did it," and have that on the screen. Is there some sense of the possibility of that?
Absolutely. Those conversations have already started today. Book groups, reading support, math work, talking about ways that teachers can invite students at a certain time to be a part of a group and communicate that way. And so we just have to really see how it starts. We're really talking about seeing what the kinks are on Thursday and Friday, and then continuing to add those pieces throughout the week, especially as the elementary-level kids become more comfortable with accessing, you know, technology, Schoolology through those platforms, they can then become more independent even by the time this is, you know, done. Yeah?
You guys are going to learn something, aren't you?
We're going to learn a ton.
This may shift how we move forward.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Josh, would you like to come up and give the board a sense of our capacity and where we are in relation to all the issues that we need from you to support this endeavor?
Well, we're still working through a lot of them. I will tell you that. It's been a busy few days. We really started heavily working on this on Thursday. We met with our tech integrators, principals, and really tried to come up with a really focused plan of what is it that we're going to work with our students, or our teachers on? Because we can't just inundate them with a bunch of new tools, also teaching them how to, you know, work remotely with our students. Excuse me. So that was really the first piece, was having them identify what are the things that they felt our staff could easily pick up and get rolling with that. And that's really what today was. And like Dr. Morris said, they did spend all weekend working. So I do want to say thank you to Susan, Sarah, Janet, Celeste, and Kristen Hughes. They did a ton of work this weekend. So that's really what we focused on today. I've been trying to take it day by day. Tomorrow is, we're focusing on getting devices out, getting devices ready for kids that need them, getting devices for staff who need to work remotely, who don't have a device, or we need them to work securely on a device we own because of the data that they deal with. Microsoft Teams, Tom, is exactly like Zoom. So it's just another company, go-to-meeting. I think the limit is 250 people can be on together. This morning, we had to do something a little different. Dr. Morris threw me a curveball, yes, actually, the nurses, I'll throw them under the bus, threw us a curveball late yesterday, and we had to do a live event with a live Q&amp;A, but we got it working. So that was a learning experience, we'll say. We're also working on the phone system. How do people get access to everything remotely? How are they able to communicate? People are concerned about giving out their cellphone numbers, so how do we mask that so that they can still communicate easily with folks? I actually just had a call with our phone company with some ideas from them on how to help with that. Today was just a day of troubleshooting, finding things out that we didn't know about, and quickly making changes on the fly and seeing how it works. We still have a pretty good-sized backlog of issues that still need to be addressed. For some reason, our paras are disabled in Schoolology right now. I have no idea why. It says I did it. I don't remember doing it, but we will figure it out. Let's see here. I've spent a significant amount of time for our students trying to figure out, what are we going to do for the kids without internet? I feel like we have some options, like I mentioned, so that's good. We also have to get through and clean all our devices, keyboards, mice, so finding a way to do that. The one thing that I, tomorrow, I'm really going to sit down and figure out with our staff and students, not here anymore, how do we remotely help them? We rely a lot on seeing what they see on their screen, going to them. How are we going to do that? How are we going to help parents and staff get help from us? How do we route that to the right people? So that's the big focus tomorrow. I've talked to some districts about some of the tools that they've used, so we can remote in to devices. So that's really the next big hurdle that I'm going to be working on. Continue to support the tech integrators. Like I said, they're working so hard, and we want to, you know, make it so they can keep working with our students and our teachers. There's been a lot of meetings. I feel like I bounced from, well, now it's nice. It's just SAU, my office, because it's all virtual, but there's a lot of meetings right now. We have several tomorrow to talk with, meeting with Catherine, to really go over the needs of the paras and the technology that they're going to need. We did spend some time today with counselors on how to remotely connect with kids. We're meeting with principals again tomorrow. We'll talk about trying to identify those families, see if there's overlap between the school lists with families that need access to technology. Developing guides, videos, how-tos to roll out to staff, because today was Fast and Furious, and they're going to need references, how to do the things they need to do. And as we've all seen, things are changing hour by hour, and we are just adapting to whatever comes down the pike. So my staff have been great. I think Ryan and Sue are going to hate me, because I feel like I yelled at them all day today to help with this, help with that, but that's the way it goes. So yeah, it's been busy. I can't think of anything else.
It's just amazing you were able to stand up right now.
Yeah. It's fine.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I also wanted to bring, there is, the one silver lining that came out of this process is Doris. So I'd ask Doris to come up and share with the board what that silver lining is.
As of tomorrow, we're officially meals on wheels, on bus wheels. So we knew this was coming, so being a little proactive, I ordered a ton of paper goods and supplies last Friday to come in today, just in case. I didn't dare not do it. But once we knew it was a reality, I contacted the state to request permission to produce meals and distribute to families. We had talked about possibly doing it on buses, and that's what we're going to do. The good news is that because we had a summer program, and it was an open program the last few years, and this is still the same school year as our last one, which was supposed to be our last, we can serve meals under that program this year.
To everyone.
So all students during the closure have access to free meals.
That's awesome.
So that, I worked with IT to put together a survey that went out to parents, which they can just order meals for their children. We will deliver twice this week, Tuesday and Thursday, we will deliver breakfast and lunch to whoever wants it for two days. So we did not know if this was going to be small or huge. Well, it's becoming huge. So as of today, I mean, as of the time I wrote this, when I wrote it and drove here, I already had six more that had signed up. That's how quickly it's building. Right now, as of tomorrow, we will be serving over 560 meals.
Oh my gosh.
Because they're getting four.
That survey went out this afternoon.
It went out this afternoon, and within 10 minutes, we had about, what was it, about 30, 30? Parents are calling me even now. But anyways, my staff is all, most of them are working. We're working out of the high school, all here. I will send one staff member who's certified and serve safe to, with each bus, so that meals will be kept, you know, safe food handling. Almost all my staff is certified. Those who aren't, we're going to take it this week. So we'll put that on hold. But we started moving all the, today, all the perishable foods from the other schools to this school, so we won't have, we'll be eliminating the food waste that we would have had with the closure. I think we can easily do this. My staff is excited. They really worry about the children when there's no school. They worry on snow days, so this would have been a lot of grief for them. They're happy to be doing this. What else? So meals will be delivered by the vans. Breakfast is going to be a breakfast entree, so either cereal and yogurt, milk and juice, or a, you know, breakfast bun. We have some that are made with sweet potatoes. We have good, they're all low-fat, low-sugar, whole-grain items, and a milk and a juice. Lunch will be, they have a choice of either a sandwich lunch or a salad lunch, which sandwiches will come with fruits and vegetables and milk. And so they all have all five components. I've had so many parents replying about how thrilled they are that we're doing this. They're so happy that this district is taking the time to do this and caring for their children, because it's really a hardship on a lot of them. And those who said they don't need them are even emailing and saying, "Thank you for doing this, and is there anything we can do to help?" Even some have offered donations. So I'm really humbled by the feedback from these parents.
And Doris, just before I came over here, I had a community member call, and they're going to contribute $500 to the 68 Hours of Hunger program, which we will continue. When the buses are out on Thursday, we'll deliver those to the families in need. So, just so you know.
That's great, because actually, you know, I'm the co-chair for that as well. And with the craziness in the stores, the stores can't guarantee out orders. And the donations today that came in, grocery donations, have just been unbelievable, and now monetary donations as well. So we're really, really happy with how it's going. Knock on wood for tomorrow, but I'm pretty sure that my fabulous staff will get it done.
So just as we're closing on you, Doris, I just want to let the families know who are listening, that the opportunity to have a free lunch or a free breakfast is available, and that all they need to do is contact your office. And I also would want the community to know that we're still looking for donations in relation to the 68 Hours of Hunger, which pays, that provides food for our poorest students, so that they have food over the weekend. So thank you, Doris.
Thank you. And they can get breakfast and lunch.
Where do people drive that to?
Where, Doris?
33 co-drive.
In my office or yours, right?
Hours.
Because we got a delivery this morning.
I know, and then I have to bring it over.
There you go. So the ideal would be across the street from the central office.
Thank you.
Michael, did you have a question? No. I want to bring Catherine up, so it's not to diminish the work of the principals, because this is challenging, but, you know, Catherine's program, we have all kinds of federal and state regulations that we have to meet, and so her staff has been diligently figuring out how to provide services to our most needy.
So first, I just, you know, thanking all of our colleagues and our staff who have been tremendous. This is really thinking creatively, outside the box, and every administrator has been working closely with us, trying to figure out how to continue providing special education through a remote learning model. As you can imagine, it's pretty difficult. So what I want to update you on tonight is that we'll be employing the same practices of general education in terms of remote learning. It's important to know that when we received guidance from the Office of Special Education last week, which is in DC, some of that guidance was written if you were going to close. This is what we recommend. Well, we had closed by that point. Upon receiving that, the guidance from the Department of Education in relation to special education was just given to us at 3:00 PM today, which again, is, it's not very useful guidance in terms of how to really support our students. So I have asked all of our special education faculty and staff, which includes our para-educators, to start working on communication plans with parents, and those will be rolling out over the days on how services will be delivered. Individual needs are going to be considered for each student. So some services will be virtual. There'll be some services, they can interact with a student, depending on the grade level, developmental level, and of course, what's going on with their programming. Some will be sent home. Some services will be direct, and some will be consultative in nature, meaning there may be check-ins with parents, more than with students sometimes, that there's something going home, and there's directions provided, and let's talk with each other about how we can make this work. Some services will just plainly not be able to be provided, and we will have to track those and provide them at a later date.
Just stop there and talk about compensatory services, Catherine.
It's catching up to that.
Okay.
So with the interruption of services, we're focusing activities and services to maintain their level of progress. We realize this may result in compensatory education. For some students, it will, services could occur over the summer and into next school year. So what that means is, every case manager, every service provider is keeping a service log. So they are documenting the student services, how the service was provided during this remote learning, if the service was direct with the student, or if it's consultative in nature with a parent, and then how many check-ins they're able to do each week. We will review these with families upon return, when we're back in session, to look at how the student was doing when they left, and where are they at right now, and what kind of support does a student need to make sure that they continue to progress. So that will look different again for each student. We have para-educators who are continuing to work, of course. Those roles look very differently at the high school than they would at an elementary school. We have the high school para-educators who, like Josh said, we will be giving devices out to our para-educators. They will be on the same Schoolology platform, they'll be able to interact with students throughout the day, in addition to their teachers. They can help other students. They're not going to be just designated to working with students with IEPs. If there are teachers saying, "We need some help," we will do that. We will help do that, because we will have, we'll have time to do that with the amount of stuff. of staff that we have, because everything is remotely. Communication plans with parents, I briefly mentioned that. Again, we are working on those, so that each parent will know how to communicate with their case manager, and, uh, what to expect in terms of, um, remote learning for their student. Uh, the tracking of services will be completed. We will not be providing services in homes. We will not be providing any services in our schools. Just, um, as of a couple hours ago, now the recommendation is, uh, as you know, groups of less than 10. We cannot keep up with that, uh, moving target. It is not, um, safe to put our staff, uh, in schools without, uh, other supports that are needed when we're servicing students, nor is it really feasible to figure out which students we would target for those services. It wouldn't be, it wouldn't be fair. Uh, so we will, again, provide those services in a compensatory, uh, fashion. Um, we have students who are in residential placements, they are staying in their residential placements, they are court ordered placements, so they have to stay there. Um, we have students who are in day placement, placements, three out of those four placements have closed, and they will be doing remote learning as well. Um, the other one I do expect to close, they just haven't released a plan yet for what their remote learning will be.
So the school will be responsible to continue?
Yep. Yep, because we, again, have a, uh, placement agreement with that, with that school.
Yeah.
Um... I think that's really the biggest things. I, I do want to just emphasize that I do think there's a bit of a disconnect between, um, some of the guidance that has come out in terms of, uh, determining which students could get one-to-one or small group instruction, and what's really in reality in terms of boots-on-the-grounds in schools. Like, we have staff who will be, um, also in situations where they need to be having a schedule that is pretty fluid throughout the day in terms of working with students. Yeah.
So, what, and I haven't been able to answer to this, what's happening as far as your media, like, IEP and have referrals and, and all of that? I'm just curious, like, how is, is that all on hold, or how is that?
No, we're continuing with timelines and compliance. So, we are, we have everyone hooked up with Microsoft Teams, uh, so hoping that families will be open to doing that remote kind of connect. If not, we'll do an old-school, get them on the, one person will have them on conference call. We can do that as well. Uh, we have evaluations that are in process. Uh, under the new rules, if they're triennial evaluations, so if there are evaluations of students who are already identified, we have 90 days. So we have a little bit of window there. For students who are in referral and have new evaluations, we will not be able to conduct one-to-one testing with those students. We can't do, um...
Right.
...virtual testing, so we'll work out a couple, we have a couple different options that we'll work out with those individual families, where we table it for now. Um, there is an, uh, emergency, um, exception, but the Department of Ed said, uh, at this time, they're not gonna allow us to use it in terms of extending time. They don't feel like it's that much of a emergency yet. So we'll work with those families to figure out what works for them and their student. And if their student is in referral and needs support, we'll do it now. So, I, we are connecting with those families. Yeah.
Is the need for compensatory services being evaluated based on the level of performance against the students' IEP goals, or only based on the amount of services that are provided during this?
So, a couple different things. So one is, you know, we, we see where students left, and we were gonna see where they, where they come in, and look at the progress towards their goals. We may determine that they need a lot of services in order to meet their goals in their IEP that year. We may determine, actually, the, the, the model that we used worked pretty well, and we might not, not need as many services. We may determine for some students with parent agreement, geez, they actually did really well, because, you know, let's just take the high school model, for example, where they're able to interact with a staff member pretty regularly, um, to get work done, they might say, "I think my kiddo's good, and we're all set." So, our goal is to make sure that students make, uh, meet their goals within the year of the IEP. That's what needs to happen.
That's great. So based on outcomes, not based on...
Yeah.
The...
No. Yeah, so when you have an interruption in services, like, you look at summer school, for example, you look at whether students, um, could or have regressed when there's an interruption in services. I mean, we're not gonna, we, we know that some students will regress, but we want to really focus on their goals, and are they gonna be able to meet their goals, or are they really far away from making them, given this interruption? If it's three weeks, if it's longer than that, then, then there's more of an opportunity for us to really be more creative in terms of how we're gonna figure that out. Not an opportunity, but it's gonna be an opportunity for us to be creative, because summer school opens up a lot of doors for us to be able to do that. Yeah, and this is consistent with how the C-Trust Directors are, are, uh, operating as well. We're all trying to connect, and as soon as we find something great, we share it with each other. Have you tried this? Have you thought about this?
Thank you, Catherine.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Jim Rizicky?
Jim Rizicky, facilities, thanks for having me. Um, just want to start off that, um, it, it seems like we were, um, this has been buzzing around the news for quite a while, um, at least three or four weeks, so, um, I, I'm glad that we reacted when we did, and we ordered disinfectant, which came in. We didn't hoard it, um, but we ordered enough, and I feel that we're adequately stocked to get us through however long this may last, or at least until manufacturers, um, deliver us more. That includes also hand soaps and gloves, sanitizer. Uh, we've received everything. Um, it's good to know, too, um, we have plenty of toilet paper, so...
Don't make that out to her.
Okay. So... I wouldn't, I wouldn't, I wouldn't broadcast that too much. One of the parents at Massway was walking through the building with one of those giant rolls that he puts on his machine and saying, "We could make money selling this on eBay." You know, trying to find the humor in the situation, so it was pretty cool.
So, um, also, with that, we began modifying schedules several weeks ago, where we, um, instructed custodians to lay off the high dusting and the floor buffing, and go into attack mode and sanitizing, um, touchpoints pretty severely. So, um, we feel pretty comfortable about, um, that approach before, we're gonna be ramping it up in the future. I just, forgive me if I look down, I just made some brief talking points, and I want to let you know where we're at with things. Uh, first and foremost, with the staff, we just wanted to silence, um, their concerns over their job. Do they come to work or not? Do they, do we have work for them? The answer is yes. Uh, we're keeping them employed for the duration of however long this lasts. There's plenty of work to do on the inside, so I know that could be troublesome on their minds for their families, how are they gonna support? And, um, we, uh, feel that we gave them that peace today, which is, um, a big hurdle. Um, Jamie and I, which is, Jamie's the custodial supervisor, we're gonna be meeting with their head custodians daily, and maintenance staff, giving them directions. Um, we are, we plan their schedule, um, we're, it's gonna be modified slightly. Um, security is a big, um, concern of ours, so I know that when we meet with the admin team tomorrow, we're gonna be establishing some of those open windows for people to be in the building. Um, what we don't want to happen, have happen, or is a big concern of ours, is possible recontamination of rooms after we've already cleaned. We want to know who's in the building and what they're doing. So, um, our approach is that we're going to be almost doing like a summer, um, cleaning mode, without like the floor stripping and, and refinishing, but it's a top-to-bottom scrub of all classrooms. Uh, we're gonna be cleaning carpets, we're, we're gonna be going into the nitty-gritty of this. So, um, we've already developed a sheet that's gonna be posted on every single door and space, where people are gonna sign off if all those items are done, um, by initials and date. Uh, we also feel very, very strongly that we know, uh, we need to have people accountable who may be going in and out of that room. Um, so there's gonna be a sign-in sheet that we're gonna require everybody to sign in and out on date and time, um, including IT staff, including maintenance people that may do a repair in that room, if by any chance we have a contractor entering a space. We need a log, we need people accountable for that. Well, there's not a lot of people around, just in case.
Jim, it'd be a good point to talk to the board about the fact that we're going to structure visitations into the building, so even though a staff member may have a key, and they can get in 24/7, during this time period, we're actually gonna s- have hours scheduled for staff to come in and out of the building, so that Jim can predict, um, when he can anticipate people coming into the building. And the central office is gonna be the same way. We're gonna, what we're gonna do is, um, flip our staffing. One day, the finance staff will be in, the next day, it will be the administrative staff that will be in, we'll keep the, we'll, we're going to minimize the openings of our schoolhouses so that, um, Jim can do the work that he just shared with you.
Exactly. Um, we also plan to put to work, um, any type of, uh, uh, bus driver or food service person that needs to fill some time in those gaps. Uh, we have plenty of trainable work for them to do and to keep them busy. Um, we are also going to be, we started the building use, um, clearing of the schedule, um, already internally. We are gonna be posting some signs around our property, saying that things are gonna be closed. Of course, we can't stop people from taking a walk around the track, but as far as organized sports, we're gonna be, um, closing that down. Uh, also, we just had to consider how packages are gonna be delivered at the school, um, and we, I feel we have a pretty good plan in there. Um, there's also some things that need to be, um, addressed as far as like contractor work and things that we already have scheduled, um, and people entering our building that are not necessarily school folks. So, um, to be, uh, just to let you know as well, um, our HVAC systems will go into vacation mode starting at the end of this week. Um, waste collection will go on call, and other contractor work will be rescheduled, and, um, it's probably gonna be a, they're gonna be with us, we, we want to have accountability, we need to know where people go, and, um, that's gonna happen on a case-by-case basis. Maintenance will be working on backlog work orders. Um, I don't want to get ahead of ourselves with, um, heavier projects, yet, I just want to get through these three weeks and see where we're at. Um, I've appreciated, um, text messages from admin saying, "Paint this, do this, do that." I appreciate the, the thoughts, but, um, we're taking everything into consideration as we do. All that to say, we have plenty of work. Any questions?
Questions? Thank you, Jim. So, the, I think the only director that isn't present tonight is Lisa. I met with the transportation staff today, and you heard from Doris that we're going to use our buses to deliver food. On alternate days, we'll use our buses to deliver Golarin bags from the primary grades, and any materials, as you heard from the middle school or high school, that need to be delivered home in order to complete, um, assignments. But we're trying to get our staff to think in two-week windows, so that we are not, you know, chasing after Golarin bags every single day, and we're trying to keep the Golarin bags, um, completely separate from the food delivery. So, we'll keep our bus drivers working, but they're going to be working on different, um, missions each day. So that's where we are with the drivers. They were very receptive. They were very appreciative, actually, as you can imagine, since they initially, you know, hired to, to move children. So I think we got all the reports. Todd, would you like to do a wrap-up? Did we miss anything that you wanted to share with the board in relation to all the efforts we've made?
Actually, just one thing that will undoubtedly come up. A lot of people have asked, "What's happening to standardized testing schedule?" Because, uh, the window for New Hampshire SAS testing opens next week. Um, and so obviously, all of our plans for doing the assessments are on hold. As of right now, the state has not made any changes to the schedule theoretically. SATs are still on for April 14th, and the SAS testing, they're operating on the assumption that we can all just shift our, if we get back in school, we can just shift to the end of the window and make it up. Obviously, we'll cross that bridge when we come to it, but as of right now, there's no, no guidance from the state on any changes they're gonna make.
And I think that's a perfect segue, Todd, into what I wanted to share with the board. In this shutdown, we're assuming that we're returning. Um, but based on the governor and commissioner's presentation this weekend, based on the guidance we're getting from the CDC, I think there's a li- lot, very high likelihood that, um, this will be extended. So, I just want to make sure the community knows that, um, this is where we are right now, but this could carry on into the spring. Uh, the commissioner and governor said it could carry on to the end of the school year. So, everybody needs to prepare mentally for, uh, that possibility. Thank you, everyone, for all the work you've been doing in these last few days. Um, I had talked to Tom about endorsing my decision to close the schools. We don't need to do that, because...
Governor.
The governor took care of that, that issue for us. Um, and then, in relation to, um, uh, spring events, we know that the spring sports season has been delayed by the NHIAA, and so we are shutting down our, our, um, buildings to other users, and Jim alluded to this, um, until, uh, we return. So, it doesn't make a whole lot of a sense for us to be welcoming people onto our property in groups at a time when we're trying to do social distancing, distancing. Um, Todd, um, was going to talk, uh, to the, to the various, um, leaders of the groups, and, um, I don't know if you had five minutes to do that today, but we plan on it, and we plan on contacting, uh, growing places and Live &amp; Learn as well, because, again, we would be violating the latest directive from the CDC in terms of the congregation of, of people. So we just wanted to make sure that the board knew all of that was in the works, and I guess final questions from the board in, in relation to the efforts we've paid, um, recently.
I'd just like to say what an extraordinary work you've done. I think how fortunate we are to have the directors we have, all of you doing this work, how, what amazing stuff you've done in such short, short timeframe, um, how much you've had to learn in such a short timeframe, how much you're going to learn in the process of rolling this out. And although teachers aren't here, just how professional and nimble these teachers are to be able to, to adjust with this, and how, just how impressive that is. I think teachers are often good with, you know, changes in schedule. This is like a mega change, and just how, how impressive it is that, that we can make this transition, and how, I don't know that you could ever be prepared for a moment like this, but I think that if, I think our staff is as prepared and as ready as you could possibly be, given the kind of constraints we're working on. So just, congratulations to everybody for the work you've done, and, you know, it's gonna be a, it's gonna be a tough three weeks, it may be longer, probably longer, but I think that this, this presentation certainly gives me confidence that we're gonna meet it as best we can. Congratulations to you, Dr. Morse, for leading the way, and just, it's very impressive. Denise?
Uh, just a question about the growing places, and was, is Live &amp; Learn at Massway, is that what, oh, that's where they are? Because I know, as of yesterday, the governor was kind of, sort of suspending some childcare licensing to kind of make it easier for parents that do have to continue to work. Um, was, was there thought to try and just, in a very, very limited way, keep either of those programs operating?
So both of those programs have far more than the 10, now the recommended 10 people in a space.
Which is new today, I guess.
Yeah.
Because that...
It's brand new.
Because I honestly have heard since yesterday.
On Friday, it was 250.
And then I heard yesterday.
On Sunday, it was 50.
Right. Okay. It's now 10.
Growing Places is already closed.
They're already...
We have not heard from Live &amp; Learn yet, but Growing Places has closed.
All right, okay.
Um, I did share with Denise, um, there is, uh, I, I got an email today that I'm going to respond to, but there's a, uh, parent in the community who's starting to organize a volunteer effort to support, um, our, uh, community outside of, uh, the limitations we have as a school system. And, uh, again, like Todd, I haven't had a chance to return the call, but I'm pretty excited by the email. I'm also gonna be reaching out to our church, church groups and seeing, um, whether we can, um, direct, uh, families in need towards them, and of course, the towns have, um, resources when people are in trouble. So, you know, we've tried to think about what's within our capacity, but there are things that are happening in our community as a result of this closure that are outside of our capacity. You know, both Denise and I were lamenting over a single parent who needs, you know, childcare, and she goes to work, she's making, you know, barely minimum wage, or someplace around that. How does she, you know, survive in, in, in an environment like this? So there are bigger social issues. As I said to the staff, you know, the COVID-19 has hit us physically, and everybody's getting that, but it's also hitting us socially and culturally. And small things that mean nothing, like shaking Michael's hand when he comes in, we don't do anymore. But there are bigger things that are impacting our families, and, and I'll go back to Denise in, in this instance, and think about, you know, how fortunate we are in Oyster River to have the resources we have, but even in a district as resourced... But even in a district as resource-rich as us, we have families in need. And so, we have to continuously work our way through that. The fact that Doris is able to provide food across the district is just, you know, a gift that nobody saw coming. But we also have families out there that need support. And so, I guess what I'm saying to the community that's watching, if you're in a position to help somebody, this is the time they need help. So, if you've got a neighbor who has a little eight-year-old and you're willing to watch them while the mother goes to work, please reach out, because this is the time to do it. Thank you, guys. I appreciate all of your support. So, getting past the coronavirus, it's my pleasure to make a nomination for the principal of the Massway School tonight. I'm nominating Misty Lowe for your consideration. Misty has been the interim principal. We went through the interview process and the review process. It was a broad-based committee of parents and administrators and board members and teachers. And she had really tough competition. She really did. And in the end, what I really want to do is honor the work that Misty has done in the district for these last few years, six, eight, six years. But also, in times of crisis, it's good for people to know who's leading them. And this wasn't the rationale that I was using when I was thinking through this, but it's the rationale I would use today. The staff respond, are responding really well, I would say excellently, to Misty's leadership in these times. And so, I would ask the board to consider honoring my nomination by allowing Misty to become the permanent principal of the Massway School.
Could I have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Misty Lowe, the permanent principal of the Massway School.
Moved by Brian. Is there a second?
There's a second.
Second by Denise. Discussion?
The announcement, the announcement of this meeting, define this as a emergency meeting for the purpose of discussion of COVID-19. So, from a procedural perspective, this is not, is this okay for us to do?
Yes.
Because we're outside of what we told the community, we said we were going to do.
Yes. Thank you, Michael. That's an excellent question. So, the school board, so when we built the schedule for this meeting and the schedule for Wednesday, we thought they would be two separate meetings. The board, by law and by policy, always can add things to a given agenda. And so, what Tom and I did is we took the things from Wednesday that had to be acted on, and we added it to this meeting, and we advertised that we were doing that. And so, it is appropriate for you to take action this evening.
So, ready? Ready to vote? All in favor, raise your hand. Five in favor, and then opposed. Congratulations.
And continuing down the agenda, and we are going to do a business item related to our MS-22. And I'd ask Sue to go to the podium and walk us through that.
This is just the traditional form that you sign off on after the vote. Positive vote, as I might add, on all of our foreign articles. We are building a new middle school. Exciting. So, we just had to put all of that information on this form called the MS-22, and I just need your signatures. I'll just pass it around. And I guess I would ask for a motion just to approve that and sign it too, please, if you would.
Motion to approve the MS-22 form.
How much, that motion?
Moved by Denise, second by Brian. All in favor, raise your hand. Five in favor. The MS-22 is approved, so why don't you just pass it around?
Is this one of those tricky forms where they have to sign at the exact same spot?
Yes, sign next to your name, please.
Okay.
Okay, this is a pretty good color, is it?
Should we return? So, in going down to the agenda, I wanted to talk about spring activities and events. I don't, as I said tonight, you know, we're closed until the 3rd. However, if we return, I question the value in this environment of continuing business as usual. And so, I went through all of the foreign trips, and by the way, they've all canceled except for the UK. The UK, we're holding on for about another three weeks because we think it will benefit the parents in terms of reimbursement. The trip isn't happening, but we're trying to advantage the parents because they have like $2,200 out right now. So, all of the foreign trips have canceled. We had trips to New York City from the music department and from the English department. Those have canceled. I would like to just go forward this spring, should we return, and eliminate field trips and any events, spring concerts, trips to the sea, coast, science center, all of that. I think what we're seeing across the state and across the country is people are trying to keep everybody close, eliminating travel and keeping people in a safe environment. So, if we return, I just would like to be able to say to the world, even if we return, we're not going forward with events and field trips this spring. The only thing that I'm hanging on to, and I may lose it, and Suzanne may lose it, is we're just not willing to throw the graduation commencement ceremony under the bus just yet. We'd like to hang on as long as possible, but if school does get canceled for the remainder of the year, that will have to be eliminated as well. During this time, the school prom is gone. You know, we wouldn't do baccalaureates, we wouldn't do awards nights. The only thing that's left that I'm not willing to put out there yet is graduation, but I think I'm just, you know, blowing into the wind, quite frankly. I think eventually, well, Suzanne and I will have to bite that bullet. But maybe not. So, we just leave that little bit of hope, we leave that little bit, that door open just a hair. I just wanted to make sure that you guys were comfortable with that.
Just have one.
Denise?
So, there's quite a lot of chatter on Facebook about parents who plan to, obviously, when it's safe, do something for those seniors in terms of, you know, for a prom and for the junior, I guess it's juniors as well, but just, you know, that, again, the community, you know, I think we're, I think, you know, there's silver lining. I think we're just really going to see the community, like, really come together and help people out and do what they can. So, it's hard, it's, you know, heartbreaking, I'm sure, for the students, but, you know, hopefully, they'll be able to do something for them if it's safe eventually.
Since this is a rather dramatic decision and since we are together, I would like the support of the board through a motion that we're going to go forward with this recommendation I'm making tonight.
So, this is excluding graduation, right?
That's the only thing we're holding out, but I don't think we'll get there, but we're going to try.
So, I mean, just hypothetically, if there's like, if you're going to have graduation and there was like something scheduled the night before, the night after, would that be excluded as well?
Yeah. We will focus, if we can, only on graduation. Do you want to speak to it, Suzanne? Think I've got it the way, okay?
I think you're probably right in terms of the trajectory of the overall outbreak situation. But I guess I'm wondering if it would be okay to take a more incremental approach and not go all the way to the end of the school year at this point?
I would take it any way you guys want to do it, Michael.
Out to the end of April or out to the middle or end of May, without going all the way to three months from now.
Sure.
We've all seen how much, we've all seen how much recommendations have changed in the last week, much less what's going to happen over the next three months.
I would ask if we do do that, just to give ample time for faculty and staff and administration to do the planning behind a lot of those events, because many of those events takes us months to plan. We've already started planning for graduation and for awards ceremonies and different activities such as that. I know that things like the senior art show takes months to plan. So, if that is going to be the case, then I just ask that you give us ample time to prepare for that.
Rather than pigeonhole it, why don't we just give full discretion to the superintendent on moving forward as far as what's going to be canceled or what isn't? You know what lead time they need better than we do. So, I mean, would that be an easier way to do it, or do you just want to, are you more comfortable with just flat canceling everything?
I am going to do what you guys want me to do. Whatever your collective genius is, I will follow. You know, I just know that these issues are super controversial. It's much easier for me to say to the community, due to the situation we're in, even after the fact we want to keep the buildings and the kids close to home. You know, so Michael's idea is valid, your idea is valid. Whatever you guys want me to do, I will do.
Denise?
Mike, oh, I'm sorry. Go right ahead.
I just want to add, I know that we have things scheduled already for the end of the year that require large deposits. And so, there's definitely a financial piece, too. At some point, we've lost our budgeted deposits. I mean, I know Dr. Morse could take that into consideration, but that is a piece.
Denise?
So, I, and I appreciate, and again, I appreciate how disappointing and even heartbreaking, you know, events that people are really looking forward to, but I'm also really sensitive to administrators, and are my going to have to plan for this? And then the parents say, "When are you going to decide? When are you going to decide?" And part of me just thinks that we really have to, again, focus and come together. And I really think, you know, I guess, I think we probably should do it this way, but if we don't do it this way, then I think we have to cancel everything through at least the end of May, you know? And then, I don't know if that would help or not, but I'm just really concerned. I don't want the administrators with what they have to focus on right now. They have more than enough to focus on. And again, we know our parents, they will be, "Are you going to decide? Are you going to..." And just, I just think that's going to be difficult, I guess.
I, this breaks my heart first. I just want to start with this. This is probably the worst conversation I can have, is talking about canceling major events for students, events for families that are sort of rites of passage, things that kids have been looking forward to. But I also just have to be realistic. And if you say, "We're waiting to the end of May," that does not give me enough time to plan an awards ceremony. I don't, I mean, I need more than a week or two to plan an awards ceremony. So, I just want to be careful about saying that if we delay the decision, that I'm going to have the ability to plan for that. So, I just get nervous about that.
I just take Michael's point, but there's obviously planning that's ongoing and with the added burden of what we're now trying to roll out of MoLearning. I think the closure of knowing that certain events, and I do agree with hanging on to the graduation, because I think that's unique enough that if there's any hope of holding it, at least in some semblance, that's worth trying to do. But I think the closure of knowing that all of these previously scheduled events are now off, there's, you know, maybe we're giving parents the opportunity to get at least some of their money back, if not hopefully all, and we're not burdening our staff with the uncertainty of, "Am I still going to have to continue this planning process in addition to all the other things that I'm taking on right now?" I think, I think it's worth going with the original recommendation that you made, that's my take.
So, I'm wondering if we, this would capture, because it's a little bit, "Spring events" is a little bit unclear in the motion, you know, because if something in June is at a spring event. So, whether the motion to approve the cancellation of all remaining events and field trips during this school year excluding graduation, is that the sense of it?
Mm-hmm. Yep.
Because that something in June is still canceled, is that it?
Does we, does that include spring sports? Because NHIA...
Well, if we come back and the NHIA talks about an abbreviated season, I think we have to, as a school system, have a conversation with the school board about whether we agree with that recommendation.
I agree. I just want to keep that as two separate conversations.
The NHIA, right now, is in process of communicating with high schools that information, so I'm happy to share that with you, and we have details about it. But I believe their plan is similar to ours in that they're delaying the season until the beginning of April at this point.
Right.
And, you know, for what it's worth, when I heard the word "event," I didn't consider that to apply to sports programs.
Yeah.
I guess I...
I was thinking music concerts and all of that, because we actually, you know, on Friday, Pam Felber was going to have a concert tonight for the second grade of Massway here. She called me on Friday morning, and I said, "No, Pam, I think we're okay." That was my response on Friday morning. And then, by Saturday, I realized we weren't okay. You know, it's, so I think that we just, our music teachers put so much effort and time into preparing for these concerts that if we do have a truncated spring, there's just no way that they would be doing justice to their craft or to the students' efforts. And so, I have talked to the music people, and they understand that. Plays, musicals, we have that coming up as well. I mean, when you have a truncated year, you just don't have the time to get the kids to the place where you want them to be.
So, in terms of this motion, would you want the, if the NHIA creates a shortened sports season in the spring, do you want us to say we do not want to participate in that, or do you want to have that be separate?
I think that what Todd was alluding to, and I agree with him, is to keep it separate, because the sports season itself isn't directly under our control like these other items. And then, if they decide that they want to hold the season and we take exception to that, as a school system, we just would say we don't want our kids participating. But I would think that's a later down the road. We'll find out what they're doing.
Okay.
I don't think that's an inevitable position for us to take, to select and hold out hope on one side and not on the other side. So, you're telling student athletes that, yes, there's a chance that you might still have a spring season, and you're telling musicians, "It's over." Or theater students.
Less preparation, much less preparation.
I don't necessarily agree with that.
Yeah, no, I think, you know, all of our positions are reasonable. These are crazy times, you know? It's not a right or wrong thing, you know? The difference between our programs is, these are our programs. I guess that's how I was seeing it differently, Michael. The NHIA is not us, it's them, and I suspect they'll end up in the same place we all are. And so, that's how I was looking at it. It wasn't, "We should or shouldn't," it's just that we don't have control over it.
Okay.
I mean, we could send a signal to the NHIA right now that if they decide they're going to have a spring sports, Oyster River isn't going to be participating.
But you're...
But I would do that as a separate motion.
Okay. Denise?
I guess the only other thing is, but then we don't really know when we're meeting again, is do we just not do anything for two weeks and see where we are in two weeks, but then we're not even sure if we're going to be meeting as, you know, how that's working? I don't know.
It might just be a simpler way of delineating what we're talking about. The way I had been viewing it was events were large gatherings of people, a ceremony, a presentation, a conference or a concert. I look at something like clubs, sports, you know, I don't know, clubs and sports as sort of, as a program, an ongoing series of gatherings, trainings, what have you. So, and I think in keeping with our attempts to build some semblance of, you know, moving forward, if there's a safe and reasonable way to keep those options open, regardless of the nature of it being athletic, arts, anything else, I think we should keep that open and not make that decision now while acknowledging where we're going to be headed. Does that make sense?
Oh, I have another idea.
Denise?
So, what if, because it, part of me is because of the large crowd numbers. Like, if you have a concert and you have, you know, 500 people there, whatever. if you have a concert and you have, you know, 500 people there, whatever the auditorium seats. But what if, maybe they could still possibly, if school comes back or whatever, and they wanted to do a little concert, but have it be live, like, recorded or whatever, so that people could see it online, or, you know, which is what's happening in a lot of places right now. Is there sort of going ahead with things, but there's no audience there? I mean, just maybe, not saying they have to, but just giving that as an option, so that if they did, you know, if somebody did want to do, like, a concert, you know, they want to do the strings thing, and it was just the kids, or, I, I mean, I don't know. I hear what you're saying, Michael, I get that. You know, I think the most important thing right now is to not put additional stress on our faculty and our administrators, and to kind of make sure that they're, you know, don't have to, have unnecessary worrying about how they're going to make something work, and so that's kind of where I am with that, I guess.
I guess I'm just trying to, you know, trying to figure out how to word a resol, you know, how to word a motion on that, because I think I take, I take Dan's point, that there might be some, some smaller events that might still be able to, you know, what you call an event, you know, is, is a meeting of a club an event?
Yeah, what's driving my thought is exactly what Denise was talking about. It's bringing people together in groups for performances that we know are going to generate, you know, great interest by the community, as they should, but also bringing our students together in big groups is, you know, problematic in this environment. So, you know, you take Andrea's strings program, and that's 180 kids in the middle school alone, and another 80 here at the high school, so you're talking about 250 kids. Same with David and Mark's program, you know, same numbers. So, you know, when Pam was talking to me last Friday, she was thinking about, because we were still in school, recording kids and sending those things out to the, to the parents. But when we come back, I'm pretty sure, if it happens this spring, that there'll be a lot of conditions upon our return. And so these are the things we have to be considering. The issue of monetary costs that have been put out by parents and by the school district, trying to get people, trying to get companies to reimburse. You know, I listened to a phone call today that Jay was having with the Washington DC tour person, and it was not an easy, it was not an easy, oh yeah, we'll just write you a check. Well, can we, and they start negotiating and that kind of thing. It's sort of like dealing with used car salesmen in the bad way. Same with, you know, hotels and airlines, and it's, you know, it's, well, can we do this, and can we do that? And so we're trying to get, you know, funds back to the parents who put out literally thousands of dollars, or the school system that's put out literally thousands of dollars. And it does take a lot of time and negotiations to do, do that work on behalf of parents and on behalf of our taxpayers. So it was larger group gatherings that I was concerned about, but it was also how do we maximize the return to our parents and to the school system in a time when hotels and airlines aren't necessarily yet cooperative, you know, that kind of thing. So there's a lot to this, just in terms of trying to, you know, end things. David and Mark Laforce, David Irving and Mark Laforce, they had like $50,000 committed to the New York City concert that was going to be happening in three weeks. David negotiated with the people to reschedule it into the fall as a way of saving that money. So it's definitely, it'll happen in the spring, but he was able to negotiate that because there was a willingness on the other party to try to figure out how to salvage that. That's not the case in everybody we're talking to, you know, so, but already the principals are, and our music staff are working hard and tirelessly to try to get maximum returns on investments. Nobody will get 100% back, because nobody's going to give us 100%. So it's a matter of how close to 100% can we get?
So I'm wondering, I'll make the motion, a motion, a motion, I'll move to approve the cancellation of all major spring events and field trips excluding graduation. So the major, I mean, there might be some smaller things, but you talk about major, so I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Seconded by Dan. Further discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Forward, favor? Opposed? All opposed? Motion's approved. Need a motion to nominate and approve continuing contract professional staff, contract professional staff members as submitted by the superintendent? We have that list in the backup.
Did we get that?
It's, it should be in your packet.
It was in backup?
Mm-hmm.
It moved into today's sometime.
Oh, okay.
I didn't have a chance to look at it yet.
Does that have to be done now?
Yeah, it's, you know, to be totally honest with the board, this is really a ceremonial decision, because if you're on continuing contract, unless you're on an action plan and the district is working towards your dismissal, it's something that boards across the state do, but the fact is, if somebody's on a continuing contract, they're hired for next year. But school boards like to do this, because it's a recognition of people's status.
All right. I'll go ahead and make the motion to nominate and approve the continuing contract professional staff members as submitted.
Moved by Denise, seconded by Brian. So this is pretty much almost pro forma, really?
Yes, exactly what it is.
Okay. All those in favor, raise your hand. Forward, favor? All opposed? Abstention? One abstention? Okay. I think that's the business.
We just wanted to have one more conversation with the board in terms of whether you wanted to suspend your public meetings during this time of crisis, during this emergency time period. Within this three weeks, you have a scheduled board meeting for April 1st. Do you want to continue that meeting and distance ourselves in this way, or do you want to suspend that meeting until we are officially open?
I think with everything changing, I think we should meet.
What?
I think we should meet on the 1st, only because with everything changing, at the rate it's changing, in two weeks, we could be in a whole different situation.
Right.
I'm reluctant to do that, because I think that we do, I mean, I think there's a guideline now to have, not have meetings with more than 10 people. I think, I'm sure that'll be in place. And I think that if we have these meetings, I think we're putting people at risk. I just think that this is, we have to minimize group meetings. And for us to have a group meeting during this time, and essentially in defiance of, I think, it's going to be good practice, we should do it. I think we, I think we should hold off until the 15th. I think then, then if we, then if, at that point, I think if, if these guidelines are still in effect, we would need some dispensation to hold a virtual meeting, which we could do, that could be recorded. So we'd have to have some kind of other mechanism to meet. We would, during this time, we would always have some, if there's an emergency, there's something, we could probably do something. But I just think to have a regular meeting in defiance of the guidelines, I think, you know, I'm, I'm in a high-risk category. My wife is in a really high-risk category. I mean, you know, proximity meetings, why should, I don't think we should do that.
Josh, if we ended up having an electronic meeting, is there a way for the public to participate, either through visually, so they can, if we have a virtual meeting, can we get the public to be a participant in that virtual meeting? Because the issue is the right to know law, and do we have a way of establishing a virtual meeting so that the public can participate?
I think so, because we're streaming live right now, so we would just have to capture, you know, I'd have to work with Alexander, but we'd have to capture the input from individual devices. I mean, we do give the board members iPads, we might be able to use that, to camera on that, to get all the feeds, bring it together, and send it out. So it's possible.
Do you suppose that you, you and Alex could experiment with that idea?
Sure.
Obviously not this week, but maybe we can communicate with the board to say, we're going to try this on X date in the evening, and then see if we can make it functional, because really, the key to the whole thing is, the public gets a right to know. They need to be able to participate in real time, public comment, at both ends, all of that. So if, if that's something you could, you and Alex could work on.
Certainly.
That would be wonderful. And if it works, then I can share that with the board, and we can try, try it, you know?
Got it.
See if we can make it work.
I would need assistance. I'll tell you right now, I would need assistance. So we'd have to work that out.
And there, and I think there'd have to be some change in the, in the guidance of how to hold meetings, because as my understanding is, you have to have a physical presence of four members in a place. You could have, you know, right now, you could have a couple members, you have a quorum, but you have a couple members could do it long distance. But that's not the way it's set up in the guidelines right now.
I just wanted to share, as a school board member myself and my own community, an email went out late this afternoon from the School Board Association, laying out the RSA and the specifics around the very questions you're discussing.
Yeah.
Been in a board meeting since that went out.
Yeah.
But that is in your email.
Yeah, I saw that.
Alexander said that the part of the emergency order does allow some flexibility.
Yeah, yeah, I, you know, we got the communication from Barrick, and we have a communication from our own school's attorney that it's possible, but they're also saying that we have to try to make sure that it's open to the public.
So, Denise?
We, we would just need to do, like, a test or something.
Yeah.
Before, because, like I said, I've tried things like that before and haven't been successful, honestly. So I just would want to make sure.
So if Tom is right, and we need to have physical bodies present, then you could be one of the physical bodies present. Michael's technology skills are pretty stunning, so I'm sure that he would work, work it through from his end of things.
So should we wait?
You're not afraid of technology, I guess, Michael, is what I'm trying to say. So, you know, we could, let us, let us see what we can do. Obviously, we want to be able to keep the business of the school system going, and then we can get back to...
So, so try, try to do a virtual meeting on the 1st? Is that what we should try to do? Do we think?
Just looking at Josh in terms of the realistic, do you think we can try to pull that off for the 1st, given time for board members?
Or should we wait till 15th?
It should be pretty quiet around here next week, so we can play.
Okay. Let us see what we can do, and then, if we're not able to achieve it by the first meeting in April, we would be able to achieve it by the second meeting of April, I think. So I'll just, if everybody's comfortable, I'll keep you posted on our progress, and we'll see whether it makes sense to try to pull it off in the first meeting of April. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Part of the question is, what are the, what are the matters that require action? How urgent are those?
Exactly.
Two things I know for sure that were put down on the Wednesday agenda, were inspection about financing for the initial phases of construction for the middle school and the bus, and I'm pretty sure the bus is set for more weeks. No consequence, I don't know how, how critical that inspection about funding decisions.
Yeah, well, we've had some updates on the idea of going out early, and with the volatility in the market, it's not making sense. So we know that when, it was a great idea last week, and then 22, whatever it was today, loss is really causing strain in the financial markets, and the bond bank has said, don't do it now, it's too crazy. Although last week, they were saying, yeah, that's a great idea. So that's how much, how fast things are changing.
Wait till Friday, it'll change again.
So I'm, so I'm just looking for a consensus. It looks like, you know, if we can pull it off in a virtual way on the 1st, yes. If we can't, then we'll skip to the second meeting, and hopefully by then, Alex and Josh will have worked out the bugs so we can pull it off. Is that okay?
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
I just kind of skipped over public comment, but I don't think we're going to have that. We would also have to, Sue, I think, have some manifest meeting. If that meeting in the 1st does not take place, we'd have to have the manifest committee meet at that time, right?
But we can use the old model of board members coming in independently of this meeting and reviewing it. Who's on the manifest is Dan and...
It's Dan and I now.
And Denise. So the idea would be, Dan, that you would come in, look through the manifest, you'd sign off. Denise, at a different point, would come in, she'd look through the manifest, and she'd sign off. Because the reason we do it here is for convenience, but there's no reason why you have to be together to do that.
Okay.
Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay, I think that's, does the business for the day. Leaving, so could we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Moved by Brian, seconded by Dan, Michael. All those in favor? Okay, we adjourn. Thank you all for coming.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you all for your work.